All right, roll call.
Commissioner Gall?
Here.
Commissioner Price?
Here.
Commissioner Larson?
Here.
And Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Note, Mr. Commissioner Shadwick is absent today.
All right, well, I'm gonna bring up the public forum, if any citizens may speak on county government, limited to three minutes, please. Do we have anybody? Yes. State your name and address, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Alan Lindholm. I live at thirty-six forty-seven South Lightville Road, Sonoma, Kansas. I have a, some notes here from a meeting that was held on May twenty-fourth here. It was a, Mr. Cable did a big presentation on Waterwell Road and the drastic condition and stuff of the road. Now, I'm sure you probably all remember that, 'cause there was thirteen, maybe fifteen people here from the Noel Crest Edition and the Sunny Slope Edition, they expressed that they'd like to have the road paved and stuff because of conditions. I would like to show you some pictures, if I may. Sunday evening, we had a bad wreck on the intersection of Lightville and Waterwell. And it was, I don't know what the sheriff's report will show, but I feel like the accident was caused because of poor road conditions and high speed. At the meeting on May twenty-fourth, one of the things that was discussed by a lot of the people from Noel Crest Edition was the fact that we had no speed limit out there, so anybody can drive any speed they want to. And I believe this accident was caused from speeding on a country road. There's a hole right there in front of the, all the lines that they put in underground. And I believe he hit that hole and it flew into the air and then rolled sideways. I don't know what the sheriff's report will read, but... We asked you at that time to please instate some kind of a speed limit on that road. John-
Oh, I recall that, yes.
John, at the, at the meeting, John said, you know, "Why can't we do that right now?" And Monty said, "No, we'll do it later." Well, it's later. It's five months later.
Yeah.
There's still no speed limit on that road. Somebody could've got killed. There was four males, adults and a boy, in there. And I don't know whether they were strapped in or not. None of them were hurt. The ambulance was there, fire department was there, but nobody was hurt. We're lucky. And this, we live out there, and this is where we, we feel like we wanna be protected. With a road like that, we can't be protected. You're driving that every day. And now the school buses are running again, and you can't follow them. A quarter, you have to stay a quarter of a mile behind them, because they're driving forty, forty-five miles an hour, and they're raising so much dust, you can't see. You know? You get to the intersection on the top of the hill, and you can't see from either direction, so you gotta pull clear out almost into the intersection in order to see. We just need something done out there. We need a speed limit. If you're not gonna fix the road, don't fix the road. You know, but we need a speed limit there. It's dangerous. Somebody's gonna get killed, and that's what was mentioned at this meeting. Somebody's gonna get killed. Two people said-
I thought we were looking into that, and we did. Not very long after that, I complained about Grand Street also, it was so dusty and the traffic. It's fifty-five in there, and of course, that doesn't mean you can't drive sixty-five, you know, and and that, it wasn't very shortly after that, they put the signs up out on Grand Avenue. And what is, is there, was there a decision?
I remember asking about that sign at one of our meetings, and someone had, I mean, don't quote me on this, but I think someone had said that the sign was being ordered, or we had to go through the, we had to go through the motions-
Speed of the sign?
Yes, that we had to go through the motions, and we hadn't really voted on it, and-
I don't know that we ever followed through on it, I guess, maybe.
Well, actually, we, we set up the traffic counters, and part of that discussion, we presented the results, and the average speed was forty-something, forty-two or something. And, you know, of course, whether or not you put signs up or not, there's always people that-
I know, people are still gonna abuse it, I know, we know.
Yeah. Uh, there's a certain percentage that don't care what the sign says, you know, and so, I would like to say that if we put signs up, it'd be safer, but, uh, you know, when, when our measurements were showing that people weren't, you know, most people do forty-some mile-
We're not speedy.
Yeah, there was a, there's, we pick up an occasional one where somebody is just rocketing through there. And they're not driving the conditions, and I don't, you know, you know, a sign is not gonna make them drive the conditions.
But if they're, if they're allowed to drive, say it's unsafe at fifty-five, and the average people know I need to drive forty because of the dust and but that one person comes through and has an accident, we're allowing him to become in that case, because we haven't, we haven't posted it.
Yeah.
So I'm really, I'm still for getting the, reducing that before-
I didn't realize that we hadn't followed through.
Uh, north of, north of town on Ohio Street, I travel that a lot. It's that wide new blacktop road, and they reduce it to forty, right where all those houses are. And I don't really see why it needs to be reduced, 'cause it's a good, safe road, you can see everything. There is a, down at the corner, somebody has to be more careful pulling out, but it has one of those yellow signs, the thirty anyway. Of course, if it's yellow, people don't have to apply to it. I slow down in that forty mile an hour, because maybe twice a year, the sheriff will be there, but I don't wanna get a ticket, so I slow down.
Yeah.
I mean, it's the law, and I slow down. And I wish it wasn't there, 'cause I don't think you need to slow down there. But if we, you know-
Another thing is, that road is still being used by the military, sand trucks and everything going out to crisis city. I don't understand that, because-
Right, well, I, I did talk to them, I had a very long talk with them. That is an emergency road, and they have the right to use that road, and we can't stop them from using it. We can have them reduce the speed, and they have, would have no problem with reducing the speed limit on it. And, and, but we, it is, they are, they are not, we have no control over them. The federal government controls them. And they have the right to use that road, and we cannot stop them. And, and I've, you know, I asked him, well, if they could go the other way, and he said, "We will work to try not to use it, but when they're coming that one way, it's they have so much time," and he, he just let me know, "We're gonna use that road." But we, but he would comply to reduce speed limit on it. And I guess it just kinda got, got there and never, things haven't got finished. And maybe as Commissioners, we need to maybe put it on the agenda next week and talk about it again, about the getting, I, I'm for reducing the speed limit, what, I don't know how the rest of you feel.
Well, if they insist on using that road, why don't we get them to fix it up like they did the ones out-
Well, yeah, they-
You know, we got ten million dollars worth of road there, and they're not using it.
Yeah, they don't, because they don't, because they don't have the funds, and they don't have to. They're, they're pretty, they're who they are, what they are, and they're just, you know, it'd be nice.
Yeah, oh, no, they wouldn't have funds for that, yeah. All these cables and everything they've running out there, these things have ruined just every, and that's because of that accident yesterday. 'Cause that's caved in underneath there, there's nothing there. Rain, rain has washed it out. There's no dits there. There's no place for the water to run, you know?
Well, we are still working on that, with that company that did that, so, but, uh, let's put that on the agenda next week and discuss it, Rita. And, and you think, Dave? I, I'm, I'm for, I'm for reducing it to forty. I, I don't have a problem with that. I think it'd be a it's something we can't fix right now, so we could and, and then if a person speeds and goes sixty and has a wreck, it's not because we didn't warn them that you need to slow down. It's not our fault.
That was my, that was my initial concern, is that if, if there's no speed limit on there, and they're, they're going the speed limit, but it's still unsafe, they get a, they get, they get cited for maybe having an accident, but they were going the speed limit. Whereas if it's posted to slow down, um, it's kind of like a warning, whether they obey it or not, I mean, that's a catch twenty-two, but at least we're trying to be proactive about it.
I apologize for going over three minutes, but this is an important subject, and, and we need to discuss it, so.
Yeah.
Is there anybody else that would like to bring something? All right, moving on to regular business.
This is item one, approval of the agenda for the public forum as presented today. Mister Chairman, I move, we approve the agenda for public forum as presented.
I second that.
All right, Dave moves, and Jim seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero. Item two?
Approval of County Commission Minutes for September twenty-seventh, twenty sixteen.
Do you have a motion?
Mister Chairman, I move that we accept the County Commission Minutes of September twenty-seventh, two thousand and sixteen as presented.
All right, Jim moves.
Second.
Dave second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, four zero. Item number three?
This is a proclamation declaring October twenty sixteen as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Have a proclamation here read by Abby Hunter, domestic violence advocate of D VAC.
Wanna come forward and give your name and address, Abby?
Or whomever wants to read it, I guess.
Oh, okay, okay. Would you, would you like for us to read it? Proclamation, or do you, or do you like to read it?
Are you waiting on her? She wants to read it.
You all wanna wait on her? Okay.
Well, the only other thing we had on today's agenda was, um, the update. Can we, we just-
Or if they'd wanna, I mean, I, I could read it, or if one of you wanna read it, that's fine.
Here she comes right now, maybe.
Oh, there she is.
There she is.
And there you are, okay.
We're ready for you to read your proclamation, if you'd like to come forward. You stepped in just in time. That's right. And give us your name and address, please.
My name is Abby Hunter. I'm the domestic violence advocate at D VAC. Um, do you want our business address?
No, that's all right. Yeah, you could do that, yes, that'd be fine.
Okay, two zero three, South Santa Fe. Okay. Proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, two thousand and sixteen. Whereas, family and relationships are often counted among life's greatest blessings, and tragically, many Kansans' relationships are tarnished by violence and fear. And whereas, the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security and humanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, economic and coercive control or abuse. And, whereas, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention report that one in four women and one in seven men have been the victim of severe physical, physical violence by an intimate partner, which translates into twelve million people nationally and approximately five hundred fifty-seven thousand two hundred and seventy-five Kansas, or twenty percent of the Kansas population. And, whereas, the U.S. Department of Justice reports that intimate partner homicides compromise fourteen percent of all homicides in the United States, and women are twice as likely as men to be killed by an intimate partner. And, whereas, the Kansas Bureau of Investigation reports that twenty-five percent of all homicides in Kansas in two thousand and thirteen were related to domestic violence. And, one domestic violence murder occurred every twelve point seventeen days. And, one domestic violence incident was reported to law enforcement every twenty-two minutes, twenty-four seconds. And, this violence is inconsistent with the values of our community and will not be excused or tolerated. And finally, in declaring this month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we encourage all citizens to speak out against domestic violence, to provide support for survivors of these crimes, to encourage community leaders to hold perpetrators accountable, and to make domestic violence prevention efforts a priority by hosting events, creating policies at school and work, and by working with your local domestic violence victim service providers.
All right, and do you have any events coming up?
We do. On the fourteenth of Friday, we'll have what's called Speak Night at Ad Astra. We'll have, and this is in collaboration with CAPS, so we'll have anywhere from sixth graders to adults come and perform poetry or other speaking material until nine o'clock. And then on the last Thursday in October, we'll have a Light the Night event at Campbell Plaza on Santa Fe. We'll have little battery-operated candles, we'll have a moment of silence, and we'll also have the silent witness displays on the stage.
All right, anything else you wanna tell us?
No.
All right. Well, uh, I think we'll I now therefore, John Cowan Price, Lean County Commissioner, do proclaim the month of October two thousand and sixteen as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Kansas, and I think we need to, uh motion on that?
Mister Chair, I move we declare October twenty sixteen as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
I second that.
Seconds, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, if you wanna come and we'll present that to you, and we sure appreciate you all coming, yes.
Thank you, your word.
Thank you.
All right, and item four?
We have a road and bridge and engineering department update, and have, I believe Darren's gonna start off, road bridge, uh, road superintendent with his update.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
It's just a brief update of, of what the maintenance division's been doing for the last couple of months. Uh, it's been wet. Um, so we've tried to fit a few different things in, um should be in a folder out there.
Oh, boy, that looks nice.
That's our new anchor.
Yeah.
This is a pneumatic roller that we purchased from KDOT that the Commissioners approved for three, thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. We bought it just straight from KDOT before it's sent it to auction. This roller has six hundred hours. It's a two thousand and five, so in equipment years, that's, that's pretty new. Uh, the department will get a lot of use out of this. New, they're probably around eighty to a hundred thousand dollars. So, pretty good savings for Sling County.
You've used that quite a bit already.
Yes, we have.
Out there on Niles Road. I've seen it operating really good.
Um, we set up and took down voting booths for the August primaries, and, uh, because of some shortages that we had in personnel, um, we were able to get, uh, one of the supervisors out and do some motor grader training with some of our new rule operators. And a very seasoned rule operator, and, and some of our employees that needed some motor grader training. So we were able to do that. And then we burned some trees during the wet time, 'cause it's a good time to burn those things. Um, some of the work we're doing, um, we're dura-pashing. This is a dura-patch time of year. Uh, this is a picture showing the machine. It mixes the rock and the oil, and it, uh, covers minor surface cracking to keep the, uh, the water from penetrating it during the winter months for the freeze thaw. Uh, this is just a picture of the process. No subgrade failure here, but in order to keep the water out of it, um, it sprays a layer of oil down, and then it mixes the rock, and then hump it up a little bit to, to get the water to run off, so it doesn't sit. And that's just the finished product. Um, we did go up to House Road, got a phone call, there was some drift on a bridge that we had removed a couple of years ago. And this is on the Mulberry Creek, and it backed up there quite a ways, as you can see. So we went up there and we removed that drift, and also what we did while we were up there, we removed those back walls and kinda reshaped the channel a little bit, so there won't be as much there
Catch up.
catch-up, hang-up on. And so that's just a picture of the restored channel.
Looks nice.
Um, we also reshaped and recompacted a mile of shilling road from Ohio Street over to the sand plant with that, with that roller that we purchased. And we did some asphalt patch repair on Headville, Headville Road. Couple of years ago, the railroad replaced this culvert, and then it, it settled, so we had to go back in there and, and re-level it. This is Tyler Road. This is down the southwest part of the county. Uh, because of some bridge construction on Soderberg Road, it was, we were directed to reshape and, and upgrade this a little bit, so during the construction, the local traffic would have a way around. Uh, we did complete that, and, uh, this is just a picture of the after. So during good conditions, uh, local traffic has a way to get around that, that stretch. And this is just some shoulder work we did on Cloud Street. I believe the Commissioners approved APAC to put a, an edge wedge on there, but there were portions of this where, where no rock would, would hold if you were to put it there, so we went in there and, and built some of that up. This is, um, looking, this is, uh, Halsted and Farley Road. Um, it's some ditch cleaning and tree removal project that we had down there. Um, as you're looking there, you can see, uh, your sight distance going, uh, to the east isn't very good. Uh, we went in there and we removed those trees and did some ditch work. You can see, now, if you're coming up on that intersection, you can see a quarter to a half a mile in either direction. And then this is just around the corner, uh, coming from the other way, same thing, you can't, uh, vision's very limited. Uh, so we removed those trees and then cleaned the ditch out. So if you're coming from this way, you can see traffic coming from a, a long ways away. And this is just a copy of, of what we call our Hold Harmless Release. There's actually two portions to this. One of this is the right-of-way entry that allows us to have our equipment on their property, and the next part is the Hold Harmless, um, where it says, you know, "We're gonna be there, we're gonna do the work." Um, and that they're not gonna, they're gonna hold Sling County harmless for any damage. That doesn't mean if we, if we tear something up, we won't fix it. But this just allows us to be on their property, and, and we get these signs whenever we do tree removals, or we're gonna be off the county right away.
Probably eliminates a lot of sunshine, or brings sunshine where the road will dry out also.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, then roads really dry slow and they don't get sunshine, don't they?
These are, these are also, if you go back and look at, this is a maintenance thing. Every five years, we'd have to come back and trim these. But where the property owners allows us to remove them, it frees up, forces us to go do things.
Eliminates that soft spot where that shade is.
Yeah.
'Cause that's always there.
This is on Salinsburg going east of Burma. There's actually a, a collapsing concrete, or, I'm sorry, a collapsing culvert in there. This area is typically prone to flooding. Engineering, um, ran the drainage on this. Uh, the, it's, the road's just gonna flood, so we didn't feel it was appropriate to spend, you know, ten or twelve thousand dollars on a culvert pipe where the road was gonna flood anyway. So we have material in our yards that we use to build a box. Neil ran some calculations, and we had these beams in our yard, uh, so it's material we already had. Um, these are concrete blocks we buy for fifty dollars a piece, uh, from the suppliers here in town. And we cleaned out the channel, and we actually provided twice the opening that that culvert did for, for less money. It's just-
How wide are those blocks?
Those blocks are, are five feet wide. No, they're five feet long, two and a half feet wide. Yes, yes. And it's just the process of building. This is a, then we put the corrugated metal decking on there, and, um, that's some of what we had asked to bid for the Purple Wave stuff. And then we cleaned the channel out to improve the drainage, so not every rain will the water go over the road, but it'll, it, it is gonna go over the road, and if you So we did leave a little swell back there, so instead of, when the water does go over the road, instead of washing this box out, it will, it will go over the road. And it's pretty slow. It sheets over there. It doesn't really cut or rut through the road when it goes over. Um, this is a box out on Solomon Road. Got a call, uh, this timber's just bad. We went in there, and, uh, we changed this up a little bit. We put in a subfloor. And when we salvaged bridges, oh, about five or six years ago, we came up with a lot of these sixteen-foot planks. We have hundreds of them. So, um, we put in a subfloor and ran the boards with the roadway, uh, so there wasn't any expense in repairing this other than the time. This is a, a bridge on Salinsburg Road. If you look over there off to your left, you'll see the, the plank on the, on the outsides of this bridge are wearing out. It's a very narrow bridge. One of the things that's to note here is that the planks on the outside should not be wearing out. There's traffic over there. So, um, we went out and fixed it, but one of the things when you get to these narrow bridges, just, this structure's in good shape. If you look at it from the bottom, um, the outside metal that you see spanning across that bridge isn't a beam. It is a channel iron that's just, has a piece of wood that they use for a nailer. So when that traffic gets out there, it really doesn't have the support of the bridge. So we went in there and, uh, we replaced them.
How, 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 um, deep is that drop? That looks pretty scary.
Oh, it's probably thirty-five or forty feet down to the bottom of that.
Well, how many ton bridge is that? How many ton bridge is that?
I believe that's a ten-ton bridge. That's a different, different study session.
All different topic.
I mean, it's a bridge that I wouldn't wanna go over with five tons, it looks like.
Yeah, really.
This, this is some culvert work we did out on, uh, Reardon Road. But I thought it was interesting to put in here. The mower hit this culvert pipe, and the crew went out to fix the end of it. They decided to paint it pink, so the mower operator will be able to see it. Uh, this is a, a structure that engineering had identified. One of a, a boy that used to work here said, "Hey, this thing's, uh, not in very good shape." They sized us an actual, this could be a culvert, sized a culvert, and we went out and put that in. There again, we always try to clear away from these things, 'cause that's why they end up silted up and non-functioning, is because the, the downstream drainage. So that box was replaced by this culvert. This is a concrete culvert, um, at Sundgren Road in Halsted. We have problems with these, these concrete culverts where they were put in. You can't see that very well, but, uh, the ground shifts on these, and they break apart at the joints, and so they make those holes. So whenever we, we find these, we try to replace them with a continuous pipe. This is an entrance culvert on Burma Road. A gentleman called me, said this culvert was non-functioning and, and about ready to collapse. Went out and looked at it and, uh, replaced it. That's the end of our report. We are striping. We're about seventy percent done on that, and, and hauling aggregates. If you have any questions, I'm sure to answer.
Questions from the public? Traffic control coming up, do we? Is that all a part of it?
Did you have a question?
Yeah.
Yeah, I got, I've got a question for you. When you fix, can you fix that hole out there?
What hole's that, sir?
I'll see.
Well, he was just talking about the accidental Waterwell Road.
I'm not aware. I know, I heard him talk about an accident, but I did not get a report. I will get out and take a look at it. I'll get out and take a look at it.
All right, well, traffic patrol, was that part of it?
We, you know, we've been sign maintenance and striping. We placed barricades. We're, we're gonna be doing working out there. Really, right now, we're just concentrating on getting our, our striping done, uh, which is the last ever come down to the, uh, asphalt company. When they get Don Meyer Road overlaid, I imagine that'll be the last of the striping.
Yeah, it's looking pretty good, especially on the Gibson Valley Road, other than where we need our repairs there.
All right, on our engineering division.
Me on cable. Good morning again, Commissioners. This is the engineering division, the road and bridge, August, September report. And we'll start out with, uh, we really didn't have, in that timeframe, any projects that were totally completed, but we have several underway. The first one is our countywide hot mix patching, leveling and surface course and profile milling, and that's contract with APAC Kansas for, um, one million seven hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. And, uh, there are pretty much, they're kinda, they've got a few sites left, and so I'm showing a few of the pictures that we were, that we did during August, September. This section of road is up, uh, this is Stimmel by, um, Elseline Great School there. It's just west of Halsted Road. That section of road had a really thin asphalt surface that was placed years ago, and it's all broken up. This receives a lot of bus traffic for the kids, for them dropping off the kids at, at Elseline Great School. So, we've, for years, we've patched and patched and patched and patched the, patched on top of our patches, but we finally decided to mill it out and actually put a, a decent asphalt road there. And so just a few pictures of the milling it out. And, um, I guess I didn't get a picture of the completed one, but it, it, it turned out really good, and it, it provides for the bus traffic there to the school. And then this is just around the corner from that. Uh, this is actually on Halsted Road. You can see there, we're right at the south side of the interstate. Those are the Interstate seventy signs there. And so that section of road from the interstate down past the school, um, was really starting to show kinda a lot of issues. So we overlaid that section of road.
You got, you got the road good, but the tracks are terrible.
Pardon me?
You got the road good, but the tracks are totally terrible.
Yeah, and we've, yeah, yeah, we hear from Chris Corozzo with the Elseline Schools out there. Yeah, we've, in fact, we've complained a lot, and we're we're actually gonna put up some signs about rough track crossing there. We've had the same issues like over on Country, uh, Country Club Road and by, um, Schooler Elevator. It is incredibly difficult to get the railroads cooperation with upgrading these crossings, so I, we definitely, we've complained, and, uh, they kinda don't do a whole lot.
Is it time to call on Country Club again? I noticed that-
It's getting rough, too.
It, it's really, really deteriorating.
Yeah.
I think I'll, uh, I think I'll give her a call today.
We've got three, we- Yeah, we've got three really bad ones. One's there on Country Club by, by, um, Schooler Elevator, and then this one on Halsted Road- Yeah, we've got three really bad ones. One's there on Country Club, but by, um, Schooler Elevator and then this one on Halsted Road by Cargill. And the other one's down on Waterwell Road, right there by Philip Sliding, uh, and, and.
Crestwood, right in front of Crestwood.
Yeah, Crestwood. So we, all three of them, we've complained and they're kinda the people that say the check's in the mail. So if anybody wants to call the railroad, you know, they, they don't like local complaints anyhow.
Do we have any leverage at all on those things? Pardon me? Do we have any leverage at all in getting that done?
Well, we did have some.
Uh, yeah.
We no longer have him in there, but, uh, there's somebody that took his place and I'll call her and I'll find out who took her, uh, who took his place. He actually really got, got on the ball and I'll try and, I'll try and work into that side of it and see if we can get that worked out.
Well, if you get him on the phone, mention all three of those crossings, 'cause they're, they're all theirs.
They're there, yeah.
Yeah, this, this is the overlay on, on Halsted there. And then, uh, moving, we, we have a couple of projects left, uh, as part of that APAC work and one is up there on Donmire Road, uh, that Darren mentioned. And then we've also got some cleaning up to do in the Kip Road overlay. And they're also working down by, um, on Fallen Road. So the next project is our Waterwell Road, uh, the bridge over Spring Creek. And this, uh, King Construction and, uh, let's see here. We actually closed the road on July sixth and then all through, since that time has been the earthwork that's been going on. The, they're really large embank, embankments on both sides of the creek being built. And so they've worked pretty steadily all through the summer in, uh, building those embankments and, and, uh, King Construction moved their crane in, uh, on September twenty-second and then they started, they moved a bunch of equipment in yesterday and started excavating for the, for the, uh, new bridge piers. So, uh, that's a removal of the old, uh, multi-plaque culvert pipes. Uh, they didn't come out real easily. I think the contractor thought they'd come out a little bit easier than they did and they didn't.
Those were huge culverts.
Yeah, they were.
What were they, eight, eight foot?
Uh, I don't know what, I don't remember what diameter is.
I've never seen one that big. That's the only place I live here.
But they were pretty, pretty deteriorated. It's a multi-barrel, multi-plaque culvert pipe and just to show you that, uh, anymore, nothing goes away. So all the, all the steel that came from those culvert pipes that were pulled out has been sent for recycling. So, um, I threw that picture in. I thought that's kinda cool. We were out there for one of the times in one of those bat wing planes flying over. I don't know if you see in the picture, but it's just kinda cool because that, you're out there by the bombing range and you see your incredible aircraft if you're observant, but anyhow. Uh, there's, there's the work on the embankments themselves for the new bridge. And there's the new, there's the King Construction's crane that was moved in and set up to start construction of the bridge itself. So that'll start, he, you know, in, in earnest. Like I say, earlier this week, they started excavating for the, um, piers. Uh, the other projects, uh, Darren mentioned Tyler Road, that, that was improved to provide access around Soderberg Road while we built two box structures. And, uh, those structures have, uh, kinda run through it real quick here. That, remove the old structures. Uh, and there they're preparing for the base slabs and setting the rebar and everything. That's the concrete placement for the base slabs and the wing wall, wing walls. I'll go through these fast. If you want me to stop, let me know. So there's the slabs in place. And then, as we all know, it's a pretty wet summer and, uh, some, somehow when you're building drainage structures, uh, they tend to get flooded when it rains. So it, that kinda held us up a couple of times. You can see the rebar sticking up out of the water flowing. So they basically left us with a pond and, uh, the contractor had to pump it out to get back to work and then set the wall reinforcement, poured, poured the walls in the top of the RCBs. And there's the completed box with the formwork still in place before they wrecked out the formwork. And there's the completed structure. That's, that's before back, that's where they stand right now. Both of the ones in Soderberg Road are, the structures are completed. They're not backfilled yet. The, it, they will be backfilled in the pavement place before the close of the season, so. And then we'll go to the shop, uh, Road and Bridge Shop Building Improvements, um, run through those real quick. Uh, that's been going on for the last couple of months too. Uh, there's our new overhead doors. Uh, they're, they're a chocolate brown kinda color. And, uh, they're nice doors. They're really nice insulated doors. You can see the building kinda is shamed by the doors. Kinda need some paint on the building. But no, the doors are awesome. I think they're gonna be a nice, as far as insulation, but we do need to, um, go ahead. We've got that proposal we've, we've requested from Riley Construction to do the top pointing and painting of the building itself. So go, go through those real quick. And see, there on the left side of that picture, that's the current wash bay. And, uh, as, as you recall here, a couple of weeks ago, you approved, uh, uh, a change order to Riley Construction to build a new wash bay. So that in bay will be torn off and they'll build that new wash bay with the big twenty foot wide by sixteen foot high overhead doors there. So that's gonna look entirely different there on that end of the building. And then, uh, they, they put in the new vehicle exhaust systems. And you can also in the, in the back, background see the new lighting. That, uh, they haven't put up all the fixtures yet, but they put up some of the fixtures and then had to order the rest. I'm looking at Darren 'cause he, 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 he's living through this a lot closer. But they, it does make a fairly dramatic difference in the lighting level in the shop. So it, it's, you see those.
They turned them around and they just to see if they were gonna do better that way. Yeah.
But you know, you, you see in the old part of the shop building, the old light fixtures and that, that light looked just yellow and that stuff, the new ones are really bright. That, that's in the office area. They put up one fixture. Doesn't really show up too good, but, um.
In the office, in the office area, then when the lights would go out, they come on, is that right? Some of them for emergency lighting?
Uh, I don't.
They have not got to that. That's, that's part of the table wiring. They haven't started.
Yeah, yeah. They hadn't, we haven't got that far yet.
Emergency lighting or the censored lighting where if no one's in the room, they'll turn off?
No, emergency.
Yeah, no, it's emergency. It's for.
That's one of the requirements.
For the exits.
Light is off, but it'll light up.
And this, this portion that I'm showing here is, they, they started, they, here a couple of weeks ago, they started, or was it last week? I'm losing, I'm losing track of time. But they started putting in the force main for the new lift station out there. And that's the boring equipment. Kinda doesn't show up real good in the pictures, but they bored the line under the pond all the way over between the engineering building and the traffic control building. And then started, they set up their coil of, of pipe there and started pulling it back through. And, you know, unfortunately, the, the gripper thing that grips the end of the pipe and they're pulling it back through the bore came off, uh, as I understand, under the pond. So that kinda ruined their day a little bit and they had the, they had to make some corrective measures. But I think the force main's complete. Darren said the new lift station can has been installed. Uh, we haven't been out there all day, so I don't know if they put pumps in. But, uh, hopefully this week it'll be operational or ne- by next week or something if the weather permits. That's the pipe they were pulling through. And that's digging out the old lift station to put in the new one, so. That's the old lift station can. It's, it's really small, you know, compared to the size of our facility. That's a fairly small tank.
That duplex, it's about five times as big.
Yeah, the duplex. Yeah, it, yeah, the new pump station will be, that was a simplex. So there's only one pump. And the duplex will have a backup pump so that if one of them kinda quits working, the other one should pick up the slack. Uh, other projects, we worked on the pedestrian bridge and got that package down, uh, the removal of this pedestrian bridge out back here. So that should be happening, uh, latter part of this year. And, um, also did some work on a drainage study on that Merrimount Road that you heard this morning, so. Um, that's pretty much what we've been up to.
I wonder when, uh, most of that building is gonna kinda come together pretty fast, but the wash bay's gonna take a little time yet.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe a couple, three months. You think first of one, first of the year it'll be done? Or you think it'd be that fast or it's hard to tell?
Uh, yeah, I'm not, it, I'm not really, you know, we'd kinda hoped that it would be done by the end of the year, but I, I guess.
It's hard to tell by the.
Yeah, it's hard to tell. Since I haven't even broken ground yet, it's, I'm not holding my breath. It'll be.
Pretty, I think everybody's pretty excited about that out there.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have the bigger wash bay.
It's be a good accomplishment.
Yeah, that'll be a nice, nice add-on because it's like twenty-eight feet wide. When they get done, you get a, you got a twenty-foot door in there. You can get your rug graders in and out from both ends. So it is, it is a good add-on. And putting them duplex, uh, pumps in there, that'll, that'll handle just about anything you put in there.
Is there any questions from the public concerning the, it's, you're here, you might as well get it in.
Yeah, one, one thing I wanted to know, John, I didn't ask earlier and all of you. Uh, we had talked in that meeting in May and it was conveyed back to the people that live out there, the residents, that we were top on the list. That road's gonna be done. What has transpired? Have you had a meeting and then a decision been made about that road?
Well, uh.
As far as paving it, oiling it, tarring it, black topping it or anything?
I think, I think, um, like we said, it's one of the top of the list, but the money's not there right now. Is that, that's where we're at, isn't it? More or less, Rita?
Has it ever been brought up in a meeting since then? I, I used.
Yeah, we did, yes, we did talk about it.
Pardon?
We did talk about it upstairs and the, the, the funds aren't, just aren't there right now to, to do an extensive amount of. And, and, and deciding to just do it in a, in a poor way, we didn't think, you know, just to put blacktop on it right now and, and do it poor where the, it would wash out so bad along the sides and it would cave in. If we don't do it right, it's just not gonna work. So it's gonna, and it's gonna take some, but I really did think we had kinda thought about changing that speed limit, didn't you, Lucy? I really thought that was.
I asked about that and so I'm kinda confused without going back and looking at that, those minutes. I, I really thought we, ooh, yeah, I, I, we discussed it. I know we discussed it upstairs. I don't.
I read the minutes every week and there was nothing in any of the meetings.
I, I asked a question regarding that. So see, I must not have gotten into the minutes, so.
It's kinda slipped through, hasn't it?
Yeah.
But we're gonna get back on that sign Monday. But it, you know, we're kinda, we've also have discussed about some of the things that are, uh, we have four new commissioners coming on and, uh, we're moving some of that responsibility to some of the new commissioners that are coming on for some of these new decisions. But the funds right now, we just, we, they're not, they're not there right now. So it'd have to, uh, there'd have to be, uh.
So no can, no, no decision has really been made and what you wanna do with the road?
Now, we did decide we didn't wanna just patch it. I, I mean, we discussed that, didn't we? We did, um, I'm, I remember discussing that, the patching. Neil, we talked about that. Just patching that on the sides would not be a very, going in there and laying so many inches of blacktop without having any thing for the sides to cave off just wouldn't be a very good investment is what we had talked about, hadn't we?
Well, actually, it's in it, also that section of road is kind of same condition as Merrimount. It's part of the lawsuit. And it's, so it's, that's, we keep hoping to get a answer to the lawsuit, you know?
On who's responsible for the road, city or county on the, there's a lot to it yet, I guess, but yeah, right now, we're not, we're not. That probably, just to be honest with you, this commission probably.
So we've been pushed down the list.
No, we haven't been. You're still at the top of the list.
We're still top of the list.
There's no other work being done either.
There's nothing being done like, uh, building a road. We're not building any roads that.
You know, you haven't been pushed down. You're still at the top of the list.
Not been moved out at all. We, we're overlaying, but that's, that's everyday business. Everything that we're doing today is everyday business, like our bridge, uh, boxes and stuff like that. That's something that's already been approved way before you even came to the May project.
Well, I understand that, you know, that this, these projects that we saw today were probably approved nine months ago, two years ago.
Oh, they've been approved a long time ago, just like the bridge that we're building out there on Waterwell Road.
Some of those were approved before we even came in.
That's, that didn't happen today.
I, I understand that, yeah.
It happened a long time ago. We furnished that money for it almost the first of the year or was the first of the year. Yep.
Any other questions from the audience? Okay, other business. Any other business?
John, just to give you a little update, um, the corrugated metal decking that I thought was just talking to you about is a notification came on my phone. We did win the bid for that, which was twenty-one thousand dollars worth of material if you had to purchase news for fifty-seven hundred dollars.
Wow, fourth of price.
Yeah, very good.
We would probably, we probably would've gone twice that almost, wouldn't we? Yeah, so we got a really, yeah, we've done really well on, um, not just wasting taxpayers' money. And I was talking with Rita earlier. We were talking about the jail. Uh, you had brought up a hundred thousand dollars that we paid out for a quarterly. Well, that's four hundred thousand. It was costing us seven hundred thousand, wasn't it, Jim?
Yep.
And then I, I just sitting here thinking about something that was mentioned earlier today that, uh, something real simple that we saved a lot of money on and, and that's just another example there and that equipment, the machinery we've bought and, uh, this county works to not just waste taxpayers' money. And, uh, we've done very well at being conservative with the taxpayers' money. And that's new stuff, ain't it, that we're using? Yeah.
Yep.
And boy, that makes a nice bridge, doesn't it?
It does.
All right, and, uh, announcements.
I would like to read a quote that goes along with our domestic violence advocate resolution today. This is from Joseph Story, part of a speech that he gave to Harvard University in eighteen twenty-nine. He was a Supreme Court Justice at the time. And he said, "I rarely believe Christianity necessary to the support of a civil society." "One of the beautiful boasts of our municipal jurisprudence is that Christianity is part of the common law." "There's never been a period in which the common law did not recognize Christianity as lying at its foundation."
Any other announcements?
Mr. Chair, I move that we adjourn.
And here's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Right.
So adjourn.